Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But welcome everybody in person and online. Joining us this evening, first item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
My move to the group.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Approved the minutes as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Proof of the agenda, any additions to the agenda tonight?
We received two more side authorizations, totally a total of three.
Okay. Move to the amended or motion to approve the amended agenda.
Let's go.
All right.
Sorry, Ken.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. First up on our agenda, Maddie Dunnens, Lake Region Public Elder Director.
Yes.
Good evening.
Evening, and thank you for letting the whole family be here this evening.
Thank you for putting books.
Thank you, yes. Yes, daycare closes at five thirty, so it's just that we're very final, I was packed in here. Um, I am here, I suppose, too bold, I have this report in front of you and then under unfinished business, I'm hoping you can look that up. Um, we also have a recommendation to appoint a new board member that I will bring in pretty soon. Um, so I've got some copies of this, uh, before the meeting started, I am here pursuant to North Dakota Century Code forty dash thirty-eight dash oh nine to present our annual report to our governing bodies, I visited the city last evening, I'm here today. Thank you, and um, so a couple of things that I would like to highlight in this report. Um, on the second page, you can see that an average week in twenty twenty-two saw almost five hundred people visiting the library, saw almost forty people, oops, that's not a toy, saw almost forty people, um, at a library event, saw three hundred and seventy-five physical items checked out and over a hundred and fifty digital items checked out, as well as a hundred and fifty-plus questions answered at the desk or over the phone. Um, and those questions tally were taken out of averages of a normal week, and every question outside of where is the bathroom in the library count. So we get tons and tons of requests for phone numbers and application assistance and um, you name it. So uh, so it keeps us pretty busy for sure. The next page, page three, shows a couple of highlights of collections, checkouts and services that are offered in twenty twenty-two. We saw over twenty-seven and a half thousand items checked out, um, and that was physical items. Um, and then over eight thousand digital items were checked out as well. Of that total, almost ten thousand books and movies were for children and teens. And so obviously we are um, big components of literacy and early literacy, and we uh, we try to push that with our preschool story times or summer reading program, for example, it's playing around right now. So uh, we hope see that number just continue to go up and up and up, but it's really, it's promising to start with. Twenty-five thousand people came through the doors in twenty twenty-two. Um, and that includes, that is in through the doors and then in through the second double doors. So this does not include all the people who came in just using community room or anybody that came to any sort of off-site collaboration that we had with other organizations, that was just bodies through the double library doors. Um, the American Library Association has come up with a kind of uh, value of library services template, and according to that calculation, there was over half a million dollars of library services uh, that were extended to the public in twenty twenty-two. Between books and movies being checked out, uh, computers used, printing services, wifi access, you name it. Uh, the next page, you'll see uh, the small breakdown of programs and events that were held. As you can see, the uh, the biggest attendance group does come from kiddos, especially zero to eleven. Uh, but the fact that adults and general interest programs, they don't look like big slices of the pie, but the fact that they're visible at all is a plus because in years previous, they would not have even shown up on any sort of graph, so I'm really proud of that. And on page five, the next page, the one thing that I would draw your attention to uh, would be the date of last building service. Uh, our building turns twenty years old this year, and we're excited about that and that it's done such a great job serving the Lake Region thus far, but there are some things that are going to need to be addressed. For example, the following have not been touched since before the building opened in December of two thousand and three. Paint, floors, bathrooms, signage, lights, window treatments, and most importantly, the HVAC system. So uh, it it's just currently not in a sustainable place. Uh, it works for now, it felt okay in there today, uh, but we all know that that could change on a dime. We're very thankful to our best friends Lake Region sheet metal for always being able to come and help us out when the air goes out. Um, but so in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna be launching a larger scale fundraising campaign for capital improvements, mostly for an HVAC system. So we are requesting more money um, from the city uh, in our next budget cycle, and uh, we're gonna be partnering, obviously with the Lake Region Public Library Foundation to uh, to raise some funds as well. Um, and then the back page, please feel free to refer to your own ledger, it's just a little, little spreadsheet and a little uh, indication again of uh, some building needs that are gonna be happening. Um, I do also want to just bring to your attention, as budget season is coming up, um, that we are going to be lobbying to make the children's library in a full-time position. Uh, the trends of number of people in the doors, kids that are coming in and um, and just the, you know, the the needs of the children of this region. We really think that this could be benefited by full-time children's library. Uh, so I will be approaching you later for uh, more details on that, just wanted to give you a heads up. Uh, if there are any questions about this, and then I would just move on to the board amendments.
Any questions about the presentation, the update?
Excellent. Um, so uh, as you know, we were searching for a final board member to replace an inactive uh, member of our board, and we were able to find Callie DeMars, who works for the North Dakota University System, is based out of, her office is based out of Lake Region State College, uh, and then she often uh, works at Mayville in super prudence. Uh, she has already proved to be a very um, interested and eager participant in library activities, and we think that she's gonna be an excellent addition in this advocacy position. So I um, would recommend the uh, commission to approve her appointment to the Lake Region Public Library Board.
And I'm sorry to delay my getting.
Callie DeMars, D E and then capital M, A R C.
We have a recommendation, board, um, wanna make a nomination?
I'll nominate.
Go ahead and. Do you have a second?
Oh, sorry for that.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve Callie DeMars to the Lake Region Library Board. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Excellent, thank you very much for your time, and I will get uh, the youngest member of our audience over here.
Well, maybe uh, a very, very big congratulations to you.
Oh, yes, thank you.
The governor appointed you to the State Library Board, was that?
Yes, yes, the North Dakota Library Coordinating Council, yeah, so very, very excited to get started on that. Our next meeting's in August, so.
Wonderful, congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, happy net.
Okay, uh, next up would be the Neil Gilbert acquisition.
A little unprepared, you know, because I would have to be this much. I've got three quarters of land that are underwater. I went to the wildlife and approached them about possibly purchasing one quarter of land, it's watered on two sides by the wildlife. And they said that I needed to get approval before they would proceed with their, evidently they have real estate branch of their, doesn't exist. And they told me before I'd, they wouldn't move forward at all, I needed to get it approved, but it wasn't intentional, so that's why I'm here. It brings in less than forty dollars a year in tax to the county, whereas I'm concerned you can take my other two quarters and double it, that, or not double it, but add it to that, that'd be perfectly fine with that, but.
And this is.
It's not serviced, but you can't get to it.
Right.
Right now, I mean, maybe in my lifetime, you may be able to. When my uncle was alive, he said you'll never be able to get to it in his lifetime, and he died five years ago, so.
Um, been underwater for quite some time.
Uh, I think it's been underwater since the late nineties, that quarter of land down south. So you're trying to purchase that, no, I'm trying to sell it, so you're trying to sell it.
Yep.
So the reason, I'm I'm guessing that they wanted me to get an approval is because it's gonna come fastest. But we're talking forty dollars a year.
Well, I think the process for US Fish and Wildlife, for the US government uh, acquire, that would be our approval, and then it goes to the governor's office for his approval. Um, so it's a, it's a process that has to be, you know, the steps to be completed before it's actually, actually done, but um.
So that the federal wildlife is looking to fight.
Yes.
It's right on the southeast edge, the southeast side of Lake Alice State Refuge. I don't know how current that is, but I'm guessing not right now, because I have the two quarters to the south of there as well. I'm guessing there might be a hundred and twenty acres of, if it were suitable, but I'm not looking to get rid of all of it, I enjoy going out there.
This is north of Lake Alice, or just?
Straight north of Penn, five miles. That, that quarter of land would be straight north, five and a half miles. The quarter to the south where there's forty acres on the corner there, that's the farmstead, that road that runs east to west on the south side of that farmstead is exactly five miles north of Penn.
So that's what farmstead was up there?
Gone.
Oh, okay.
Have you looked to ask any private individuals if they'd be interested in purchasing it?
No.
Would you be interested in something like that?
Sure.
You know, if it would.
I I I'm interested to see, I know that the two, because when my grandpa was alive, he had a whole section along there, and then I believe it was another eighty to the west. And he had that whole section, and then just to the west along the road, straight west of the farm, it was either forty or eighty. All of that got sold to the wildlife back in the mid to late nineties.
It's right up against the archery, or what used to be the archery.
Right. And now, now my, what I have is right up against our tree, right. I just, I'm I'm curious to see what they're, what they will offer me. I mean, I am buying the land on a contract for deed from my brother, who inherited it.
Yep.
And I, I own the other two quarters, I inherited them.
Yep.
And I'm not looking this, because I, I want the land to stay in my family.
Sure.
Um, if you've ever driven by there in the last three, four years, it looks like someone could live there, it's, I go up and mow it. The maintainer comes in and turns around right in the driveway, they do a hell of a job taking care of it as far as I'm concerned, better than I would expect. From my forty dollars per quarter that I paid in property gas, and it's.
Yeah.
Neil, I have a question about the situation. So can you contact with who?
I contacted, I went to the US Fish and Wildlife to look into the uh, perpetual easements.
Sure.
And they said that they wouldn't take it because it's not, you know, if it was a quarter of land with eighty acres still in the middle of it, absolutely they'd be interested in it. But seems how it's, I mean, it's a lake.
Right.
If Lake Alice is, that's Lake Alice right there. So then I, I asked them, I said, would you ever be interested in purchasing, and they said, absolutely. Because we already own land on both sides of it. And, but then I said, well, how does that, what's the process? And they said, this is the first process, and this has been a while. He is from Penn, knows, knew my uncle, somebody in here may be knew my uncle.
He was on the water for three years.
Yep.
So just out of curiosity, how deep are they?
I'm not sure, probably ten feet. Isn't that deep up there, you think? I don't think so.
So at least if everybody could see that, this was your uncle's spot, Gordy and Idell's, right next to one another.
Yeah, probably, back from the water with two thousand and eleven.
In twenty eleven, twenty eleven, thousands in there.
Because I remember going out there with him, he said, take whatever you want.
Yeah. So, and miles and miles and miles of water. Yeah, and you know, and now it's dried up a little bit, but it's pretty deep.
And it's in, it's in waterbank, you know, which, which pays something, but that's great. I'm just curious to see what the wildlife could do with it. You know, if they come back and say five hundred dollars an acre, I'll see that five hundred dollars an acre in my lifetime, hopefully, I don't live that long. Fifty, two years old, so should live ten or twelve years at least, you know, but. I'm I'm just curious, you know, if they say fifteen, hundred dollars an acre, then I'm gonna pay harder.
Right.
But I have two children, and I figured I'll give each of them a quarter of land.
I mean, I guess if it was underwater, you probably wouldn't be, you're asking us to try to sell it.
If it wasn't, then I wouldn't.
If it was, you know, if you were, if you wanted to sell it, someone would have bought it, wouldn't you?
Right.
Yeah.
No one's ever approached me aboard buying that land, and as far as hunters, you know, there's that island there, and I believe, you know, without walking down to the property line west of the farm and looking straight north, that picture's a little outdated, it's not prior out there right now. I mean, I.
It's a one-rose.
I, you know, back in twenty twenty-one, two years ago, that was all green. You know, and I fired it out of control and burnt the yard up and stuff, and it uh, it, it was pretty dry out there. And then when the milk came back green, it looked pretty dang good. But it's gonna be years before somebody will ever farm that again.
Right.
I've already talked to a damn Webster, I talked to him about farming, and he said he'd farm it, but, you know, it's, it's better off in waterbank where you can take every acre.
Yeah.
And I know how, I know gets, I know how she gets paid for her land, it's, and what's can be insured, and it's not much more than the waterbank, so.
I don't remember years at all, but I know that back in the sixties with the wild, Fish and Wildlife, come in, it made a lot of enemies, and it created a lot of stir when somebody wanted to sell property to the Fish and Wildlife Service. And at some point, and I think, again, I don't remember the years again, but the commission at that time had deemed to make sure that they come through the process of the commission. I'm still farming, and that's why I know some of us, uh, to talk about that, that process. And in the meantime, from what I've seen, Fish and Wildlife, it has been a little more flexible.
Oh, I know, I know that, I know for a fact, it was my grandfather passed away back in the mid eighties, and then my uncle moved out to the farm from Trips Ferry, and I would say it was probably back in the, I want to say ninety-six, ninety-seven, that's when they sold those other few quarters and the forty or eighty, whatever it was, west of the farmstead. And that was, I don't ever remember that quarter being, or that forty or eighty being farmed. Heard my grandpa used to raise spots over, but that's as much as I know, I was pretty young. But I do remember the wildlife approaching my grandfather, bought five of them, and I got a picture of them on the front, sure, I'll pump it in the table.
So are we to?
Well, I I think this is the, the process that came in our case packet. This is based on Century Code, I believe. Federal Wildlife Area Acquisitions. Um, submissions to county commissioners, opportunity for public comment, impact analysis required. The governor, the director of the order, there does be responsible under federal law for final approval of land, wetland and water acquisition by United States Department of Interior. Its bureau or agencies for waterfall production areas, wildlife refuge, water wildlife or waterfall purposes shall submit to proposed acquisition by certified mail with return receipt to the Board of County Commissioners uh, for the county which the land, wetland or water area is located for the board's recommendation.
So my understanding is that has not happened yet.
Right.
And they, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, Neil, but they don't wanna send that letter if we're just gonna say no. So they said, Neil, go talk to the commission.
Right.
Kinda get a.
That's what I understood, I, I guess I wasn't aware that they had to go through the governor and all that stuff. They, they told me that I had to get approval from the county commission before they're gonna proceed with anything. And like I said, who wants, they might come back and say, we'll give you five hundred dollars an acre, and I'm gonna say, no.
So I think if you give a kind of a soft okay.
A soft okay.
Then Fish and Wildlife will go through their packet and get all their stuff ready and submit it to you.
I don't think that's acceptable, I think it's a yes or no maybe.
Well, I think they're, you know, according to this, it has to go, then go through a uh, notice must be published once a week for two consecutive weeks in the official newspaper, the county or counties in which the land and water areas are located, notice must uh, set forth the substance of the proposed action. Um, and so then I think we have to have a comment period, a public comment period on it.
Okay.
So.
I don't think you can do anything here except say yes to go ahead, or say yes to go ahead, and I mean, they can't circumvent the rest of this, you see?
Right. So, you know, just by giving our okay today doesn't mean it's a for sure done deal yet.
So they have to go through this process.
Right.
But if these will start today, it can start it today.
It can start it today.
So, I'm a little naive about this, so what do I do, go to the, talk to the gentleman I spoke with at the Fish and Wildlife and say, yeah, I got approval because I could have done that six months ago.
Right.
I mean, if somebody from the county needs to, I need a letter or something, I would assume, or I could go talk to them and say, what do I need, no.
But, well, as a private individual, I think, you know, you certainly have that right to sell your land to whoever you wish to. Um, you know, unfortunately, it's the process that involves the government, you know, so.
There's, 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 there's a waterbank contract that's on after four, five more years, so I'm, I just wanna, I'm curious to see what they'll give me.
Right.
And if there's a private individual that would drive it on it, fine.
Yeah.
Then they can come next month for the very.
Yeah.
And I think that's why you have to put in the paper with that process.
Right.
And if there was someone that they would.
And it's not like I paid five hundred dollars an acre for it, and I'm trying to give a thousand, I didn't pay anything more, I put the five hundred on it to sell it. Well, just quite honestly, that's what I'm paying for it from that, because that's, you based it on what they sold land to the wildlife for twenty-five years ago.
So Gordy, would you have to draft something up for him?
So, in total candor, this is my first time going through a process like this. But the way I read it is that whatever agency you wanna sell it to, has to send us a letter saying, we wanna buy this piece of property. And then when they do that, that's when the process starts.
Yeah.
So I, I think if you all vote tonight and say, you know, we're open to it, right? We're not gonna block you out, I think that would be enough, then you could call Fish and Wildlife and say, listen, county commission gave that first approval, they're ready for you to send your acquisition proposal whenever you are ready, Fish and Wildlife. That's what I think has to happen. It's not a very common thing, this, this doesn't happen very often. So it's kinda, we're all in the same boat.
It's kinda surprising, I looked up, it would happen more often than that, but.
Maybe, especially maybe before this became, oh.
Right, I think it might have been a little bit more handshake deals and then it started to get complicated after things started getting wet, yeah.
But then after we got this in our bag, it was, you know, it'd be on the good. So obviously, then there's just somebody who's being lazy, and, hey, wildlife office, and they're trying to circumvent this. So county commission said, yes, now we're gonna sign this through, and they're, you know.
Well, that one, I don't.
I mean.
I know what you're saying.
I, I think they're just, they wanna know that they're not gonna put all this work. If they, this may be hard, known from the beginning, but we can't, I mean, we gotta let the public give their opinion and all of that, I mean, we got information, we gotta take it before we can make a decision. And it seems like he's just trying to circumvent that, well, I don't have to do this work, I, you know, yeah. That little, little employee here or nothing, but that's what it looks like to me, so I mean.
I agree with you, I, I mean, they, they don't wanna do the work until they have a, a yay.
Yeah.
So I, I totally agree with you, because that's the way I took it, that they will, they will not proceed until they get a yay.
So I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, yeah, you can, we can definitely.
Start the process.
We can start, yeah, I, I think that we have to allow the process to happen.
Yeah.
But according, I mean, there's, but there's nothing else that we're gonna be able to, as far as modalities, I mean, they have to produce the other portion of.
They gotta make.
Portion of the process.
Right, you're right. But basically, what are you just looking for?
I'll make a motion that we allow the process to begin.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to allow the process to begin with asking US Fish and Wildlife if they're intent to purchase that property, that they go forward and submit a letter of intent to the commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just gotta go to them now, and if they need something from the county, I just contact, somebody from the county, and go, okay.
So without any further discussion on the motion?
Well, is that sufficient?
I think so, I'm writing down the code for you here, Neil, so when you call them, Fish and Wildlife, you can say, hey, the process is all laid out right in this section of this. I don't, I, I think that's enough to get the ball rolling tonight.
No.
Should have been in the big leagues.
Okay. All right, with all of that, all in favor, signify by saying the most, or saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, and Neil, thank you for coming on.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Kevin?
Yes. Do we wanna start with Rogers discussion, or?
We could, we could start with Rogers discussion.
Not sure what the question is, Richard, so I'll, I'll try and answer what I can.
Well, I guess we're wondering about how it can be that you're gonna create more flow there without asking landowners if that is acceptable. Because if there's more flow there, there's gonna be water going south down the lotton, there's gonna be more water going west that goes over the road that floods me out, gonna go south to flood. It's gonna go south to flood Joel. It's gonna go south down the lotton to get Steve Swanson all riled up. I don't know how you can increase the flow there without checking with other people. And we've been complaining about that Texas crossing and that road by that bridge. And I was told they can't put big culverts in there because there's not enough room to keep it level, so we don't have that dip to go through. And now you're gonna put three big culverts in there and I was told it has to be the same in between each culvert as the size of the culvert. So you're looking at thirty feet wide at least there to do. How can, how is it acceptable there, but not on that Texas crossing that Joel and I have to go through that with big machinery? And pour a bit of water sometimes. Last year I, I had to PP that south of there because I couldn't get through there. And this year I have a slew that I pump out down there, a sixty acre slew. I couldn't get there. I just finally got it worked up to yesterday. Because I can't get through there. There's four or five feet of water. You can't drive something through that. I have driven through it with my sprayer before when it's full, but I tell you what, coming back through there with the empty sprayer and that water hitting those big rims, you tip over on that west side, but there's a deep hole there, you're dead. And, and we don't see any reason why that Texas crossing has to be like that.
I mean, that could be why I thought it is easy as.
Yeah.
There's all, I mean.
I'm not sure about the Texas crossing myself. I mean, they told us originally to put X amount of culverts in and make a little water crossing, so that's what we did. And then a few years later, we were told to add smaller, leave it a low water crossing, so that's what we did. Nobody's suggested anything to us, to me.
Well, I've asked, I asked, we asked about it three and four years ago.
The water board?
Water board, yes. They were up there and looked at it. Brian Onsted, Dan Webster, Paul Becker, Jim Burke were on there. They all looked at it. I said, would you drive your, they all farmed. Would you drive your machinery over that callo? They said, we wouldn't do that. Well, why they expect us to?
I get it. But I'd be like I'm saying, if they would've told me to put six flares in there, whatever, they would've done it. Nobody's ever saying this.
Oh, this was at least three and four years ago. We complained about, oh, at least I do.
Well, I think it's been at least that long since some of those guys have been on that water board, so.
Right. I know they were all up there and looked at it because we took them right over there.
Right.
Yep.
And, well, and I'm not sure how far out that stream crossing standards what they look at when they're determining that. You know, I know they, they don't just kinda look at it, give a head shake and, and move on. You know, it's one of those processes that gets extensively evaluated. And um, I don't think their intent is to flood anybody out down the stream.
But it will though, because there's a dike on the south side of that coulee there that, the farthest right one there. Isn't that where that dike is, Joel?
Yeah, right there.
Straight out there, yeah. And it goes over that when it gets so high, because it's the same level as that gravel road. And it goes south and it ends up down into lotton.
Well, those ditches you got that air on though, those are not ditches we've ever made. Those are gully washers that, those three spots there, that's where it goes over that dike. All three spots there, every year.
So where's the, is this the dike right here that's on the open?
Um, so right.
Oh, over here too?
Yeah. So right there's where the rocks are.
Right here?
Yep. And it goes over there. Every year it blows over. And then it, except to the left there, yep. Those, those are not ditches we've made. That's just overflow from coming over the top of that dike. Yep.
So where's the bridge going, Kevin?
Bridge, it's really terrible. And this is the Schley River crossing.
That's where that Texas crossing is?
Yeah. Yeah, the gunson, it's that, I mean, it's three, four feet deep some springs in.
Well, it gets so, it gets so high there, it goes all the way north to that gravel road. It's all covered with water. And it goes across there and floods me out there too.
Yeah, I don't know if you can increase the flow. What was in there before, Kevin, the bridge?
In here?
No, where your, where they're.
Apparently the bridge is.
The bridge is there today and you're putting culverts in there and taking the bridge out.
Right.
And you're widening that out to put the culverts in?
Just make the, make them fit, yes. Now, there are like seven footers, so they have to have half that space in between them. Plus twenty-one, plus another seven. So he's right at thirty feet. The, the channel itself is thirty feet.
And how would that project start?
What's that?
How would that project start? That's one of these bridges that.
Yeah, it's a eighteen ton, nineteen ton bridge, so we get back to twenty-one. We ask for a hydraulic study to get it replaced.
Okay, so how does the hydraulic study, is that just from there north or is that?
Yep, everything north. Whatever watershed comes into there from there.
Add nothing to the south.
So that's what I'm saying. How can you increase the flow there? Just from, study from the north. What's it gonna do to the south?
I mean, this water doesn't come into here, but it certainly goes out when it gets to the water.
So go up, take that up?
Always expand it. Jeff knows more about this stuff than me. I.
So.
And this goes way up north. I mean, sort of.
So right there in the lower left hand, that's where we were, right?
Correct.
Right, right.
Right here's where we were.
So, go down, where does this end up?
Oh.
So that coulee, that coulee there, that, where that bridge is and where that Texas crossing is, that coulee ends up over here by the bars.
Okay.
East of Webster. That's where that coulee goes through. That's that more coulee. That goes into Sweetwater.
Huge watershed.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
And this ends up there down where Dave Lorenz is off on the bigger culvert under four here.
Yep.
Right here, it comes back through here under our county road.
And that little neck of the woods that Doug is talking about has been a, a problem for all these wet years.
It has been, yeah.
Yeah, this, this area, it must be really flat or something because it does not drain well.
No.
All the way down into here, it does not drain real well.
So that's the water that sneaks over that?
Yep. They, they, that's three little branches, that's where that's headed.
It doesn't sneak over. Oh.
That's a, that's a push of the water, probably, because it's a little over that.
And it's not like a little rung. I mean, these things are, these gully washes are forty feet wide and four feet deep, three feet deep some of them. So you know what that does, it might feel?
So if the Texas crossing was bigger, that would eliminate some of that?
Well, I don't.
I don't know about that.
I don't know about that, but it'd be, it's acceptable to our land itself there, you know?
So you're, you're, as far as that bridge getting replaced, if the Texas crossing was better, you're not opposed to that because then at least you.
Well, we're both increasing the flow there, yes. Because it's only gonna blow it over that dike there and it's gonna create more problems to the west there.
And you already got water going to the gravel road, you said, there, east and west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go, pull left with your arrow there, Kevin. Pull left, 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 right lot in there. It backs over, it gets high enough where it backs over the road to the north there. Yeah. It has the last three, four years there and we put gravel, we fix it every spring.
See, the, the hydraulic studies, we have to follow century code on. That's just changed recently within the last, how many years, Jeff? Six years, seven years now? So that, that changed in century code probably seven years ago. And at that time, we basically quit getting the involvement from the, through the water board from the township because there's really not much they can do to change it.
Because they're making that decision with the hydraulic study.
Yeah, the state is telling us, we have to get this amount of water through there.
It's gonna go to the salt center. What happens there?
I, I get, I'm following. But they're just explaining.
So as, as they put these in, you're gonna leave the pool downstream.
Well, that's what I was just thinking. Wherever this ends up, we need to make a fix or something. That's where they need to.
Do another hydraulic study, so.
Yeah, from where, either, either it goes into the Edmore Coulee or, you know. But still, even if you did all that, it sounds to me like you're not gonna make that job, no matter what you do, it's over there. Right? Because if you put in bigger, uh, culverts like we're kinda talking here, you said it still isn't gonna take that, it's gonna go over that dike to make that job.
Especially if you're increasing the flow there with those three culverts.
And they say we can't increase the dike level because that's.
The permit they have for this dike has had a set elevation.
Yeah.
It's the same height, that dike is the same height as that gravel road.
Okay, so why somebody did that?
Yeah. So you can't have it two feet higher because then it's gonna flood out that whole road.
I'm not sure when you're kinda just trying to contain it to flow through that stream.
Well, right.
So, so the watershed on that particular crossing, that bridge, two hundred and eighteen square miles.
North of it.
North of it.
Yeah.
So.
It's a lot.
Then how many miles have you got to get the sweet water to get rid of that water?
Oh boy.
I just have.
Yeah. And it, it, you know, I, I can't remember. I think it doubles that watershed all the way down to Sweetwater.
Well, at least.
It's over four hundred square miles that it, that it doubles that area, so.
So, just, like I said, stupid people ask questions. In order to fix that, you would have to dig that whole channel deeper to increase the flow.
Yeah.
And that would be a major water project, yes?
And see, that's what I told Jeff all last week when I talked to him. From that bridge over to where this one meets the coulee that runs by my house on number four, where they join together, there would be uh, somewhere, it would be south of where you used to live, Billy, right on that road. Down in there where they're, right in there. So then when it gets further west there to the next quarter where it's green, then the coulee there all the way to the bars is way deeper. And it slopes, there's more slope there.
So then they can control them.
Yeah. Spencer Township is so flat. It's like two inches, I don't remember, two inches. It was at that meeting, Jeff, for the coulee cleanout. We had that, it was like two inches per mile. It's hardly anything. But that coulee is so full of cattails and stuff that it, if it was all cleaned out, just from where those two meet or to the west there, right there where it's green, back to that bridge, if that was all cleaned out, that would, that would help immensely.
Oh, so then, then that would take care of some of the flow.
It would. Then it wouldn't go over that dike so bad either.
Correct.
So now you're replacing the bridge on number four though, has there been a stream crossing study done there or not?
There will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there has been, yes.
Because we have to.
That, that was the year before this one was done.
And there's a, so taking that out is maybe probably.
This is part of that ditched in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the big coulee cleanout.
Okay, but does the cleanout solve the problem?
Oh, I think.
I think it would.
It would, it would definitely help, yes.
So that's in the process of being done, yes? I mean.
Well, we're working on it.
It's going to the hole.
It, yeah, it'll be coming to another hole.
It'll be coming.
So if the hole would pass then.
But it's three and four year project, you know?
Yeah, because it's like a sixty-six mile long uh, from top to bottom, bottom to top kinda thing.
Yeah.
Basically, we're doing it that way, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding, yeah.
Uh, you know, and it doesn't include any of the crossings or lowering any of the channels.
No.
All of that is designed for, approved for, would be for a maintenance type of project, which would be removing the sedimentation. So.
Which always helps.
Well, which really helps, um.
But to solve the problem, putting in these bigger culverts. It has to be more than a cleanout. Is that what I'm getting?
Well, especially if it's gonna increase the flow there.
I mean, is that fair to say, Jeff?
Yeah.
If a guy.
And, and so, you know, you think back when all these roads were designed and built and we were in a much drier state. And so since that, we've changed, you know, in the last thirty years in this wet cycle, I think every crossing from bottom to top, you know, if you redid a hydrology study on every one of them, they'd all come up different than what they're designed for. And um, and that's kinda where the, the problem lies, is that, you know.
It's just doing segments at a time, just, and the reason this happens because you don't change a bridge.
Because of the rivers.
My, it's hidden out.
Hey, and then what the state looks at is, is it a township road or is it a county road or is it a state road? And each one of them will have a different criteria for.
That's like fifty year.
It's like a ten, what's it, a five, ten, twenty?
Five, fifty.
Yeah. So it's the different events and they're designed to protect the state infrastructure because they probably a, a bigger, more elaborate road than, say, a township. But nonetheless, as important to those people that use it and live there. So.
So getting back to my question. Because I still want to ask, right? Unless I missed it. The actual fix, right? Okay. The cleanout would help, but the actual fix is to drain that or dig that out something comparable to what's on the bars.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting? That's fair so far? I don't know if it would help. Oh, I'm sorry, good. And since in the basins on the moratorium on major project, right? Is that correct?
Well, it didn't.
I mean, I don't want the water any faster than I'm already getting it.
It, it, it's all under a statewide significance. So it's not necessarily under a moratorium. It just has to go through the process of being approved at the state level in order for a project to, and since nineteen ninety-five, the state has been extremely consistent in denying everything.
So if the moratorium, without having a moratorium, that's a challenge?
Well, until we, you know, reach that elevation below the forty-six and below the pumping threshold of the operation of the outlets, they're not gonna approve any additional drains into the devil's lake.
That's why they've been doing cleanouts. To try to take some pressure off at least.
And it's not called a cleanout, it's a maintenance.
Right, yeah, right.
It's just a sediment.
It, 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 it's ver- verbiology of, you know, the definition of what a cleanout versus a maintenance project.
So what kind of uh, shitstorm would we be in if we asked for a hydrology study from Dry Lake North?
Well.
I mean, if you did one from Dry Lake North, would that stop? Not wanna say stop, but. put more emphasis on what happens below the change, like in this instance here? Would they have, I mean.
For, for, you're talking every crossing? From, from.
Cause right now their problem is it's only from that crossing north.
Right.
Well, now it's causing problems from there south, so how far do you have to go? Right? You gotta go to where it dumps into Dry Lake, don't you?
Yeah, it should.
So, I mean.
You gotta go to the end.
Right, so, I mean, what I'm saying is, these guys are getting pinched now because of that loop, which makes sense, I mean, when it, something turns, it slows it down. And now this crossing, so why wasn't? So tell, explain to me why that's a Texas crossing?
Oh, that was a water board decision.
Okay.
They wanted to dry that thing.
You asked the water board, they say it was the county.
Okay, well, I guess.
When, when, when does that put in though?
Oh.
Late nineties?
Yeah.
Oh.
Back when your.
Were you part of that? Yeah, yeah.
Was your dad on the commission at the time?
Yep.
I know Mel Thompson was on the water board when that was put in.
Oh boy. That, that's going back some years.
So they put one in there and they put one in, out on the west end of theirs, further southwest of Edmore, and that washed out this spring too, so. But I know Mel was on the water board, I believe, when they put them in.
He's been a big cement.
It was a bridge there, but it was a narrow bridge and as machinery got wider, you couldn't get across it.
Right.
I don't know, so basically where we put the culverts there, you need to put culverts there.
Well, that's, otherwise, there's no way for me to get to my land south of there if there's five feet of water in that Texas crossing. Cause I can't go around through Jolts and if there's water going, going through them others, over the spillway there, there's no way for me to get to my land.
I can't get to that either.
And I suppose, uh, building that dam or that dike up in that curve would only cause further problems.
Well, if it's already backing up over the road to the west, you're gonna make that a longer problem.
There you go, what was that, a farmstead right there?
Nobody.
I don't know if it would help to take some of them sharp turns out of it?
Well, and I think that's exactly what's being engineered in that drain ten proposal.
Yeah, I don't think they can do it though, is the way I understood it.
Taking some of those, um, sloughing areas around those corners?
Yeah, according to, I talked to John a little bit, he.
He didn't think so?
No. But I think it would help, like.
If that was to cut straight across there?
Yeah, there's like that three years.
You know that's.
Yeah, right on, right on.
I mean, it'd be straight and then dump. That's even worse if it's flat or wide or what, but it slows down there.
Terrible to do.
Creates a big problem like.
So this Texas, Texas crossing, how long is that?
It's quite long, cause you gotta get the dips in there, but probably two, three, four, five feet, six, seven.
And they're gonna have to make it wider so your culverts or whatever are gonna want to get wider also.
Yeah, it'd be plenty of wire, but you know, you gotta go down that slope nice and slow and then flat, and that's why it's so long, is the slopes are so. They're not gonna be sharp. But it's tough to go through there with a semi.
Oh, yeah.
And if you go through with a semi full of grain, that's tough on them.
Yeah, the gate's drag, you know?
Yeah.
They did, we, you guys cut a dump a little bit, cause at first we couldn't take a semi dump.
So, can you zoom in on that Texas crossing, Kevin? Is, is that just across the channel? Or is it extend up above the water there? Cause you, you can measure that out with that ruler deal.
Let's see if I can find the edges. Basically, we have to raise that some.
Yeah.
And put a bigger culvert, which makes sense.
Yeah.
I can't see where it starts and stops.
The culverts probably all start back to here.
Hardly defined.
Well, they're all pretty much right in that channel.
Yeah, you're right, both there, you know, right, right, both there, you know? Yeah.
And then they, you know, the slopes go up after that.
So is that an actual road or is that just a very?
It's actually, it's actually not really, but.
I imagine putting culverts in would also require a hydraulic study? In order to do anything?
It'd be fairly easy at this point, though, cause they got one, just a little ways away.
Yeah. But even though they, when they did the Texas crossing, if they had a hydraulic study then, then you can't go back onto that.
They never had it.
So every time you switch a culvert, you get a hydraulic study?
No, today, back in, when they built it.
Today you do.
They changed it, I mean, they changed how they do it, so yeah.
Oh.
And, and you don't necessarily have to follow them, but if you don't, you become liable for damages.
Both of street.
That would make sense, I, I understand why they do that.
So.
So if you put in for the hydraulic study, how long is that gonna take?
This is where we're sitting, and we, we know that, we gotta locate up there, we gotta do something here.
It took what, eight months, nine months to get this one done?
State, yeah.
So, and you know, the, the ones from the state are free, um, you know, but we could hire an engineer to do them. But they're anywhere from what, five, ten thousand apiece?
So, but since they did this one here Kevin, that would speed the process up on this one because they wouldn't have to, they could go off of the hydraulic study that they did on those culverts, which would speed the process up here, so they don't have to go miles and miles and miles.
Right, right.
You're not thinking like your government employee, are you? And you should be.
Can I ask you a question Kevin? Does the study say about the new culverts, is the flow gonna be comparable, is it gonna be way increased?
It's comparable.
It's not increased much?
Uh, it's not increased at all.
So.
But I mean, it, 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 every single one of these we do increases the ones that are existing. You know, fifty, seventy years ago, they were put into small, pretty big standards.
So the study's slanted, is what you're saying? Right?
Well, it, it addresses the current watershed that we're living in today.
Sure.
I, I know this doesn't fix it today, but we definitely, for your guys, we need to at least have a study done. So we can do something with that. No matter what, we need to do something with that crossing. Would you guys agree to that?
It's a problem.
Well, to be, to be totally honest with you, the water board needs to be.
I agree with that a hundred percent. It shouldn't be up to the water board.
You know, and that shouldn't be any, the water board said this, the county said that, that's bullshit, cause that's, that's a water board issue. And it shouldn't be bounced back to us.
Right.
Well, I'm telling you, don't get any satisfaction, obviously. But we really, I mean.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, I.
So do we, will we ask them that they?
Yeah, so it's, that's, speaking of a position here, but now we should, as a commissioner, we should be directing the water board to do something, or whatever you want to do.
Okay, so then if we're back to this as part of that number ten or whatever.
Yeah.
So has this theoretically been addressed at some point or are we not?
I would imagine that it, it, within that, did it ever?
I don't think they ever said anything about removing that Texas crossing. I've never heard that.
That's something we definitely need to look into. The water board.
Well, because I mean, if there's already a problem here.
Since it's been such a, an area of consternation, you would have thought that that would have been highly discussed going through that drain ten proposal.
Especially if it's flooding the.
But I, we had the water board up there five years ago, when it was, when the water was up and they looked at it and they never did anything. And that's when I asked those four of them that were on there, I said, would you go across that? No, hell no. Why should we have to? And that, that's where it ended up, nothing ever got done.
That's what the study should have done.
Or something.
I know on this new cleanout that's going on, that's a major problem.
Right.
Right there. But they don't, if they could straighten things out through there, it'd be, I think it would help.
Yeah, but they can't, they can't change the channel.
Right, that's what.
That's the thing, they can't create a new channel, cause actually if you could go from where that spillway is and go straight across to where that Cooley heads west and cut out all that curvy stuff, that would help a lot, but you can't do that. That would be, yeah, right.
Yeah, like I said, it, it would definitely help to get rid of, I think, some of them, but. Yeah.
Well, I know. If it gets going south, you guys go on Steve Swanson in here, cause he goes crazy. He was crazy two springs ago when I was going over there.
Yeah, and there's a whole group of people.
Well, there's quite a few down that lot and that would be in here. I mean, Joel and I are pretty calm compared to them guys.
And like Doug said, it's so flat there, once it goes over, it sits there all spring.
Yeah.
It never moves.
If it go and be gone in a week, it would be alright, but it, it's so flat, it just sits there.
Yeah.
And, and that's part of the problem on the bottom end of the drain ten is that it's so flat in that Webster area that it just sits there.
Yeah.
It fills up that Sweetwater Morrison area and it, and then it floods that Reagan Flats and Webster Flats area, and then it just kinda sits there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Is it possible to get the height for that dike, uh, permit changed?
But then you'd have to build that road up there, Kevin.
Oh, I got it.
You know?
I, I, I do think they changed the regulations on the, the height or the amount of, um, storage capacity a dike could, could have um, this legislative session. And, but yeah, you know, you raise it, it's gonna push things back up to the north and then create problems on that road. So.
So between this ditch and the road, one of you guys own that then?
I, I don't know, like where that Texas crossing is?
Yeah.
From there up to the road, no, I, all that on the north side of that Cooley to the gravel road, I put in graphs, cause it, it always flooded out. I could never, you know, I'd seed it late and I'd probably come up and then it would get rain and it floods out, so. I put it into graphs.
I could see where that'd be a real problem area. You can see the alkali in that, in that shot, so.
Yeah, that's.
This would, this would be.
I mean, I.
Maintained, right, maybe it would take some pressure on it.
It would, yeah.
Get calls and maintenance.
Well, and I think that'd be, you know, a big key for a lot of our drains is you put an assessment on it, you, you create a, a maintenance schedule for all of them. And, and that way, you know, you don't get overgrown with sedimentation and, and vegetation through there and water doesn't back up and pool. But you gotta start them at the right end.
Cause I've actually cleaned from number four bridge over to this Texas crossing, you know, with my track hole and yeah, it's, I don't have long reach, but what I could, there's four or five feet of sediment.
Yeah.
And I, I just could get at the edge, cause like I said, I, I went on both sides, but there's twenty-five, thirty feet in the middle of the channel that I couldn't reach and it's four or five feet deep of sediment and it's all dead cattails. That slows it down so much. But honestly, I don't think this Cooley cleanout deal will pass, I just, I don't think it will, there's guys that aren't gonna vote for it, cause they don't wanna be taxed another thirteen dollars an acre when their water, they don't have a problem with it. They drain into it, but they don't have any problems, cause they're further on down the line where it gets out of there quicker and they won't vote for it and only takes a couple of guys with a lot of land to vote no and it won't pass.
So you said like up there in the upper left hand corner where it looks like there's swamps in there?
It's just grass up there.
That's just grass.
Yeah.
And then the people all the way over to the right, walk the other way again. Over that big, it looks like alkali right there, that's a big flat there.
Well, it's, I try to farm it every year, but I was just telling Doug on the way up here, ninety percent of the time I lose it, cause it backs up, you know? I don't know, I was just putting the grass, I mean, I don't know.
It doesn't take too much of a rain to, to flood that out.
No.
Well, actually, a couple of years ago, we didn't even get any rain and they got like two, three inches by McCombe and it all came down and that Texas crossing is four, five feet deep. And we didn't get any rain.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I ask another question that, when I ask it other places, I usually get a scowl? But if you don't raise crop in there, could you make that into like a flood controller, dig that out and let that back up and fill that with that? Is there enough storage there to do any good?
Yeah, there's a ton of water coming through there.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think that would.
I mean, I don't care if you cut it across straight there, whatever, cause like I said, I lose it every year anyway, it seems, you know?
Like there's some hope in it.
But you don't wanna lose that road?
No. Oh, we can, yeah.
You're right.
And like Doug said, that's the only way for him to get to his stuff on the.
South side of the Cooley there.
Yeah. That's the only way, because when it does rain, right off that rock spillway, well, that's completely flooded that, you know?
Well, that, that east west road, that, where that bridge is at, you don't wanna lose that road.
No.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, no, that's a, that's a major road.
Right, it's a major road.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I was just wondering, it's, well, I mean, if there's, you can only take two feet out of it, yeah, that's not gonna store anything.
No, yeah, no.
I get that.
That's straight, is that how?
Well, that, that duck's unlimited, uh, project up on that north end of the valley. That one is pretty deep.
You moved some of it there.
Yeah, oh yeah, I know what you mean, you know, oh.
You made that thing pretty deep.
Yeah.
It's a big long ditch, yeah.
So the only thing we can really do here is instruct the water board to take a look at that, that's what I'm getting.
I think you got the nail on the head, I think this is a water board issue, but you can give them the directive to do something about it.
Well, I, I think we have a choice and that's been a problem for six years. All of this, well, I'm saying since whatever. I, I, I'll, I'll just listen to the conversation.
Yeah.
But that's.
It's an issue, whatever.
That's the only gonna take care of the problem, is it coming?
Going to solve.
Three culverts, is it three Kevin or what are they?
Three.
Three of them?
So are you guys taking heavy equipment across that bridge now, that eighteen ton bridge? That we're replacing?
Everybody, that's the only road there is there.
Only road there is.
Yeah, south of Edmore.
And that's the main reason why those culverts. You guys understand that.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So there's nothing we can do about the culverts. I mean, that, that's in the water studies, so the only thing we can do is try and fix that thing. I mean, I, I mean, I understand, you necessarily can do that to your water, but you need emotion? You need a directive?
Well, I mean, the culverts are way in there, aren't they?
But I mean, I mean, for the.
Schleger.
Oh, for the Texas crossing, the side over that.
Yeah, for, for the water board to.
To go ahead and.
And take a specific look at this specific here's that.
Yeah.
Cause that's all, I mean, uh, I think so, that, that's all.
Cause the study's gone through those culverts, that's kind of. And we're taking care of the bridge to pacify so heavier equipment can go through.
Right, right.
That's, that's a need.
Yeah.
You know, but this other part is where we're trying to.
Will, will that get done before harvest, Kevin?
I have no idea when harvest is, but it should be before the first of August.
Well.
Doesn't need that, no.
Well.
Baby.
We might not have anything to harvest when it doesn't rain.
But, but I, I mean. But, but I, I mean. We, we have a couple concerned landowners now. We don't get those things fixed and we have harvest going on, we'll have a room full.
Well, and like I told you the other day, the culvert by my house and the bridge on number four.
Yeah.
And then that, and then that road over there. By my Quonset over there west of Breckies. That washes out and we wanted a bigger culvert in there too, cause we spend. Five, six thousand every year and the township fixing that road up when it washes out.
Yeah, every year, every year it's it out there.
Have they even looked at that, cause I brought that sheet to you for this. This dream crossing study on that?
Oh, yeah, I would have to ask. Uh, that's a, that's a good.
Because that's the only way we can get a bigger culvert in there, right?
Sure, yeah.
But it washes that road out every time, so. I think we've spent five, six thousand every year the last four or five years.
Yeah.
I think it's further west there, Kevin. Should be in section point nineteen and thirty, between nineteen and thirty.
If it's in the highway there.
It's just a, yeah, just a mile off the seventeen.
This far, this Jimmy's?
Okay, you'd have to go further.
Further west, straight west of that, straight west of his, yeah. Right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Right there, yeah, that's it. Now, that's every year it takes it.
Yeah, that one is definitely not signed, right, I totally agree with that.
And the, the, we did talk, we, as a waterboard, we talked about that and. I think they were gonna do, what I remember, they were gonna do the hydraulic study at the same time they did the. Hydraulic study for this one. That hasn't been done yet. How about that culvert on number four, is that gonna get replaced there by my house or?
That'd be this one.
Before fall? Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't bet on it. It's, we finally got our money, but now we have to hire an engineer, get designs, get a bid, so.
So I'll come like the culvert over here. North of, uh. The church by Roarville. That was replaced and asphalt over it already, last fall. Why does that get done and this doesn't get done?
Church by Roarville.
Right by Kennedy Plaza's there, I think, it's somewhere right in there. The culvert was replaced and it's asphalt over the top of it already.
Yeah, we had to replace it. Fix the dip, draw, ground the dip out.
But why is that fixed and this isn't? This was two springs ago.
This is a fairly private project, we're waiting for their, our money. President, Big Gudicet or whoever. And they finally just got it to us within the last few months. And, uh. Now they have to change some of the. Hoops we gotta jump through. But it's in the process. Took, it's way slower than it was when I was crashing.
And then even north of that one. I mean, it took that road out or whatever.
On number four?
Yeah, right by your house, or I say it wrong there.
Isn't this, that's this one, right?
Oh, okay, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's not the bridge.
There's one, there's the bridge, but that song's not very good either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is right by yours.
That bridge will be put in this fall.
That one will?
Yeah. I think, uh. Yeah, it should be good.
A little bit further south. Just a little bit, you're right, right about there. There it is right there.
This bridge, that, that bridge will be done before.
That's been bid and ordered and they're building it right now. We're supposed to start working on that in August.
That's gonna be a box culvert still?
Right.
I thought it was sold at the box culverts in the county yard already.
Hmm, no, it's in the factory, wherever they build.
Yeah, they do that in August during harvest.
There you go, harvest is a.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah, I know.
Different language. But I think a lot of times they're looking at. Cause we're trying to get the driest part of the season also. You know, it, it sure as hell can't do it in the spring.
No.
In this phase, we're, we're waiting for the concrete.
Waiting for the concrete and.
Go. If you don't.
Yeah.
It's.
And, and I don't think we have that delivered to the yard anyway, we have it delivered right to the spot.
It comes in on a semi, they'll dump it right where it goes.
Yeah, so.
Who puts that in? Contractor, wait, lab construction, I suppose.
Yeah.
They got the bit. But they hire the cranes and. I mean, it's up to that though.
And that's a pretty big one.
Yeah, that's huge.
Yeah, so.
That's gonna be a good thing.
We can say a few areas for that one to get done. Either in between. You know, wheat and, and row crops or something, but.
One thing about it, it's not close, it's very long, it is close.
No.
It's a really short period of time.
But they heavily use road.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Getting back to our other thing, basically need a motion so that.
So directing the water board to take a look at the Slate Arm Bridge, Texas Crossing, is that the?
Yeah, I made that motion to have the water board take.
Get it. Further discussion?
Well, that fifty bucks on that, that the water board will say, we have nothing to do with it. Cause I've already talked to a couple of guys and they told me that, we have nothing to do with that.
Oh, that's.
That's a bullshit statement, because the water board uses water. I mean, black and white, I mean, yeah, it's a road or whatever, section.
It's over there, I mean, there's water.
And, and that's the other side of the argument is that. It, we're not, we're rowed, not the water, they're ro- water, not rowed, but.
Just do something.
The water has to be flow underneath the road. Um, kind of, and then we have to have the sizing in order to work with that.
Yeah, but isn't that the first step is the water port, where you do something with the road, I mean, you know, like this is, I'm not that.
So, you can tell me what. Perfectly fine, but. So, any other discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carried, we'll get that directive over there in the morning.
Okay. Appreciate you guys giving us time, you know, that last thing.
I know that's not what you wanted to hear, but.
Well, it's a start, yeah.
Tied yours.
Yeah.
Honestly, I've been over that low water crossing on the water side.
Oh, yeah, like I said, it's. It's four feet of. Boy, it's running through there, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, I mean, best case scenario, as long as you've got it filled up or you can safely go across it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's gonna get us in the right direction.
That, that would be, that would be a start, yeah, yeah.
Unless I could drag the culverts or Kevin, those other three.
So we could get them.
Somebody stole them, Kevin, I don't know what happened.
Say, oops, we put them in the wrong spot.
Alright, yeah, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Yes, you're welcome.
Did you learn anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Water everywhere.
Right, alright.
Okay. I'll start off with our projects, we did, did get our chip seal project done, they have, they're still in the process of parting. And then after that, they'll be painting it. So that's pretty much done. Uh, right now, my guys are fixing soft spots on. Roads, I guess, one, one, trying to. Uh, get the ones that we're grabbing, the summer done first, pretty much done with the ones that are grappling, so. To explain that process, some of you guys are good at this, so. What we're doing to fix these soft spots is, uh. We have this tiller, it's an asphalt grinder, we call it a tiller, it looks like a tiller. And we, uh, take about a row, six inches of gravel off the top of the road. Put it to the side, and then we till up the base and mix bags of cement. Into the base itself. And then after we get that tilled in with this grinder, we put the material that was there back. And then put another four inches of gravel over the top of it. Besides, but we're coming along with our regular maintenance of gravel. So it ends up to be about six inches of gravel.
And the idea of it is so that concrete sucks the moisture.
Concrete sucks the moisture, it's not a huge amount of cement, you. You know, you, you probably can't see blocks of cement or anything like that, but. You know, like a three hundred yard strip. Half the side, half the width of the road, probably takes eight or ten bags of cement, so it's not like really, really, it's not a lot. But what it, what it's initially to do is make a base. Suck the moisture and make a base, that's what you have to do.
Right.
We didn't know if we needed to water it or.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
But it's coming from the.
So it's there just to, to suck the water, it's not really there to get hard, it's just there to. Try to control the water.
Yeah.
Has a whole different. Action, trying to make some powder, okay, I got it.
And the problem we have is we don't get them long enough, like they'll be broken up to here this year, well, next year. Extend a little further, extend a little further, and it's just impossible to catch up to them until you do it in that time.
So, I think this is a new, um, putting fabric in?
Yeah, we used to put fabric in and. Just got to be too hard to work with, we, when we were blade, we'd catch corners and as soon as you rip that fabric, it's worthless. So we kinda gave up on the fabric and went through this process.
One other question that was asked, Edward, is. Why do some roads get a gravel pulled up in the spring and others don't? You know, like we, I call it farming it, you know, you kind of bring some of the gravel back. And that's all, this township hires that concrete.
Right.
Nothing what you.
No, that's all, they pay for it, they all work for that.
So they don't.
And even back in the day, they used to do it, maintain it, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then you get the big wooden roads on the side, yeah. Or this, this. Braces the.
Yeah, small, I, I'm on board with this. Um, and if they don't. Reclaim the shoulders, is a technical term, right?
Right.
That's where they start getting those edges on the road.
And the water sits on the road.
Maintain their guy isn't doing his job.
Right, well.
Well, I mean, that's what they say, isn't it?
That's what they say, yeah, it's a lot of issues, and that is part of it, but. Not enough material, too much arch, too much ground in your blade, in your blade, it's just a combination of things.
It's a part of that, I mean, if you got too much. Angle on your blade, that's fixable.
Right.
I mean, that, that's a training issue.
Right.
So is there a reason why they don't have stuff? I mean, when I was growing up, they called farming the road. And that painted like every third year. But I know there's some roads. Haven't been done for twenty years when I was there. And it starts to get bad, there's no material to work with. It's either you farm a road or you have to bring in four, four inches of gravel.
No material now.
So basically, you have to get on a township if they want that.
Right. A lot, a lot of the farmers don't like it because the air seaters or whatever, the, the equipment is so wide now. And the truck tires on the tractor, so why does they bounce across the wind road way first than they did thirty years ago? Yeah, but it's only for a couple of weeks, I mean. You want a road to eventually be good or never have it.
You're absolutely right. Well, that's why you pound that crap out of it.
Exactly, that's the complaints we hear.
So. Is it a lack of education or a lack of? Being willing to educate. As far as the, the disc. I mean, they just don't, yeah. They just don't buy it, or, I mean, they don't, they think you're full of shit.
Yeah, they don't, but they don't like to see that black, there's a little bit of black dirt that comes up, which is binder, if you lay on a toothbrush. And they don't like to see that black dirt coming off the shoulder.
You gotta cut that grass out.
Yeah, a bit sure of this gravel. Yes.
Well, I mean, as, as part of the reason you do it is to get your winter gravel back.
So you don't lose road.
Yeah.
And I already get that slope back.
Yeah.
Two things, you're getting the gravel back near winter.
I've never seen it where they farmed it and. Three or four weeks down the road, it's not a better road. I've never, ever seen it, not a better road in all.
Yeah, it drains better.
I'm talking with you, I just, the education that townships aren't letting. No, we're not educating, the townships.
I ain't, I ain't trying to throw a farmer under the bus, but I mean, he'll gladly pull out of a money field, clean his tires off. Going down the road where.
I mean. Horse abuse.
Yeah. I mean, unless the duels are full and they leave slabs on the road, that's a different field, but.
Like, I personally think that we need to reclaim more. Right, we do all the waterways over here, every single year. And you can tell, I mean, the slopes are a little bit better, they don't have those, uh. Gutters, whatever, oh, when it's easier to blade, you can tell like when the blade guys are blading. If they got humps of dirt. Well, now if they do go off and try to reclaim with a grader, you're gonna have cones instead of.
Right.
Well, you went through that Cooley Township, they, they didn't want this, so I said, okay, well, reclaim it with the maintainer then. And then the bitching started.
Uh, because it was like this.
Well, because you got, I mean, you're rolling sod then, you're not bringing the top in, you're, I mean, you're cutting the edge of the road. Well, that, that, that kind of split, that's a problem, and Cooley Township anyway.
Cooley, Cooley's one that does it here, so like.
I think we should keep on going, you know, should have. Other. Things on. Kevin, you got a few more items in your agenda that you want to cover?
Yeah, so we got our two rental tractors, John Deere from the ditch long this fall. And, uh, the cost is six thousand dollars to reach for two hundred and fifty hours. And we'll be getting part of that back as well. Next month, I'll have a bill for twelve thousand dollars for the lease payment to John Deere, just at thirty or now. Uh, we also got our new skid steer for leading edge equipment. And that invoice is for ninety-four thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. I haven't paid out a voucher yet, but. I'm not sure we're gonna be motion to pay that.
Want that done now?
Sure.
Okay.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay leading edge equipment for the skid steer, ninety-four, five eighty-seven, sixty-eight. Uh, roll call please.
Roll call me?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Hold us.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Print.
Aye. Okay, continue.
Uh, I need to order a culvert for a site on Ramsey County, four north of Ramsey nine, to rest it out. And it's gonna cost, it's a long one, ninety feet long, so it's gonna cost four thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty cents, so. Just looking for a motion to get that order.
So.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to, uh, go ahead and order the, uh, culvert. Forty-six, thirty-six, thirty. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
So on the early snow that disaster, Ramsey County County, including all the townships. Got seventy-one thousand, two hundred eighty dollars back. Uh, of that, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-three was for the county themselves and the rest goes. Split to the townships. That's just for information, one thing. They did finish our whole season numbers, but they gotta finish the whole state for, you know, we're gonna be seven for money there. But Ramsey County has been through the process already. Okay, uh, I contacted the company that paints our lines on our chip seal. And they're gonna get, put it into their schedule as soon as possible. Not sure what the cost is, because it varies by, by name of the foot. I did, uh, probably set it by hell for that, that's just for information. And one last thing I did have, uh, last lead when we took bids for the tractor in Soul War. The tractor, the Butler bid, does have a loader on it, it doesn't have the bucket, it's got kind of a quick attachment. I don't even know where the bucket is, but all the loader arms and everything are there, so. We can put attachments like uh sparklers, whatever out there also, so. Just to let you know, that, that's our. That's all I have, unless you have something more for me. Phew, yeah.
Anybody have anything else for Kevin? If not, thank you, Kevin, for coming in, sticking around. Uh, unfinished business, we already took care of the library board appointment, discussion on twenty twenty-four budgets. And I think we had a couple of. Proposals for salary, different salary fluctuations, adjustments. Um, wanna thank Brian for doing my bifurcals, but. Um, a lot of information on a uh to digest, um. So. Brian, you wanna explain a little bit about, we have a couple, three, four sheets in front of us, uh. Where would you like to start?
I don't have a real presentation.
Okay.
But, yeah, these are the four proposals that were from Gallagher. Um, and we just broke it down into, you know, the increases that they proposed and. Put it into the wage scales that they created and the grades that they created. Um, I mean, you can get specific and start picking apart the employees that are on there, but um. I guess the real numbers are at the bottom of the page, um, basically telling you what the, the increase of salary would be. With each one of the um percentages for a cost of living increase.
What's the penetration in the minimum?
So the minimum is, yeah, we probably could've used a different wording, but the minimum is, you're just the market, you know? What they, they did to get us, get our boys to market. And then the penetration is basically the market.
So the market, is that that fifty percent line that they talked about? So.
The minimum is, yeah, here's the fifty percent, yeah.
Yeah.
And how the process, here's how the process worked with it, so um. I took their proposals for the wage change to current, I put those on the worksheet, and then. We would have a step plus a cost of living increase, um, proposing, I guess. And so I went to the next step in the wages, in the, the, uh, the wage scale or the step scale. And then you see you got the, uh, cost of living out to six percent.
Floyd Brian was mentioning, it's basically the, and the bottom numbers that we need to take a look at. You know, overall costs. Based on the varying percentages are. You know, I might. Throw up to this page and we got step plus three, step plus two, step plus four, and one through six. My computer screen is not big, but there we go. Yeah, so. And really, at this stage of the game, we kind of wanna give our departments a uh, a direction of where. We're thinking to go with increases, whether it be for salaries or equipment or whatever, um. You know, and we always kind of say, start high, and we can whittle our way down, um. When we give our preliminary approval to our budget in August, we can't go higher than that. We can go lower, but we can't go higher. So, um, commissioners in the past have always stated. And that whenever we go high, very rarely do we see it come back down. So, um. I, I think, I don't know what kind of wishes are gonna be on our wish list going forward for. Whether it be uh software enhancements, um, we've got a couple of them that we've been. Proposed earlier this uh summer, spring. And uh one that, and we, all the departments went to training for, that will be. And not so much a wish, but a need, um, coming up.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, when we look at this minimum, that is bringing. The employees that weren't at the fifty percent to the fifty percent, correct? If there is any employees out there, plus it, then we can decide on the step plus. Am I tracking that right?
Right.
So if there was a, let's say there was an employee that was supposed to be twenty dollars an hour, so they say, but they're only at fifteen. They would bring it to twenty, and then they would get that step and whatever.
Right.
On that, on that, and then on the penetration one, this is more of a seventy-five percent dial. I wanna make sure that I'm looking at this right, because I know how I look at the other one.
So, so the other question would be thirteen step versus fourteen step?
Well, actually, with grades.
Grades.
Yeah, so uh, this has another difference to our previous, um, how we set up our wage scales, I guess, so. So there's thirteen grades on two of the proposals and fourteen grades on two of the proposals. Um, what grade is, you may not wanna know, but so maybe myself and Chris are in grade nine. So we're gonna have the exact same wage scale that we use, we won't have thirty different wage scales for each different position. Um, positions will be put into a grade one through thirteen.
And that's what thirteen is.
Yeah.
So fourteen, thirteen is. Fourteen is to add the grade?
Add the grade.
Yeah.
Um. In making the grades, you know, did change the wages for some employees.
Yeah.
Actually, probably most employees, so for example, um. I guess I would call it thirteen one B. I don't know how, you guys got it labeled, um, Candy actually labeled them.
I leave a little bit like your. But she.
Okay. If you were to look at, and pick that one apart, um. I mean, it's, most, every employee's got some kind of an increase from the Gallagher study on there. Because of really where they could put in the grades, um, the grades that changed their weights, their wage scales or their step scales. So they were basically probably moved up a step. If that makes sense. It's easier for me to think about it than to talk about it, but. So essentially, you're saying, in, in a way, it kind of leapfrogged with step, kind of? It kind of, may not even been a step, it could've been eight cents, it could've been, that's a small amount, you know? And I do have to say, I mean, we, I didn't even realize this stuff, really starting to look at our previous step scales. Um, most of us having the outages out the season, I only been here a couple of years, but. Um, I mean, our step scales were pretty close for a lot of our positions. Because there was market adjustments that were done on them every year, so, um. We're not, we were, in Gallagher said it, we're not really aligned, you know, with. Where we were with what we had.
Yeah, so I remember, there was a couple of positions that maybe weren't at the fifty percent.
Yeah. Not many.
Not many.
Right.
And that's how Megan, when she went over her speech or whatever, that's what she said, that. Most counties aren't, is in good shape as we were, are all. Is that how you want your specification?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think there was, if it was intentional or not, but it was an effort, um, to keep us pretty competitive, I think. We'd all like to get paid more and probably would, as commissioners, like to pay our employees more, but.
So question I would have, being a rookie at this, what would you and Candy recommend of the deal? Reasonably. Just because you recommend it doesn't mean we go down the hill.
Right, um, and I'm careful to recommend it, because I got skin in the knee on the sheet, so, um. Really, there was, the, the one, as I was working on these worksheets, the one that really stuck out. And it seemed to be, I don't know if the word is fair, but it seemed, every employee seemed to get a, a little bit of a cut in the game. Um, it was the thirteen one B.
Minimum or range penetration?
The minimum, yeah, the minimum.
And if, if I'm remembering your terms for minimum is market.
Yeah.
Penetration is above market.
Yeah, above market, yeah.
And if we were doing what you just said, what is the cost of going?
Well, if we did a, all the way to a step, all the way to a step six or, or no, a six percent increase. I think it's a, it's a dish of two hundred and seventy thousand. You know, and that would be. Um, maximum then. So we, we wouldn't recommend going higher than that. Um, and then we could, if, you know, we come in and things are looking sideways with our budget and our mills, then. Then we reduce and cut. Um, going forward then.
Fourteen one A is the lowest, fourteen one A is that plus six. Is the low number, thirteen one B, range penetration is the higher number.
Correct.
Right?
What I see though.
And you're talking a difference of about thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase, but it's.
Thirty-eight thousand difference between the two.
Between the highest and the lowest.
Right.
And this is just a step and a percent.
Yep, and it would get the individuals that aren't at fifty percentile to the fifty percentile, correct?
Yes. I think there was three inputs, or maybe four, if I looked at it right. Yeah. I, I, I'm, I'm heading, and actually. I'm not holding to the numbers, but what I see in the numbers that I looked at. I probably looked at this many times. There's so much information, but it's just because there's, you can't look at the name, you gotta look at the numbers, know what I'm saying? That's what it seems to be all.
There, there are a lot of numbers.
Yes.
And, and that's why these spreadsheets are obviously so large. Um, and I, like you, um, Wayne, have looked and tried to dissect until your eyeballs are fuzzy, but. At the end of the day, we're not making a final decision today, so. For the sake of conversation, we wanna give a direction and speed things up, or we wanna. Have a special meeting, uh, um, between, what, now and the sixth of July, or. Is that what you're thinking as Candy?
I mean, just to give time to look at it.
Time to look at this and, and.
And all of these proposals off of what Megan brought.
Yep. Yeah, her study, and, and uh Candy is working on, like, what we, we didn't have a Gallagher study.
I ran out of time.
So Candy.
We had talked, I remember you talking, that would just be like, what we did last year would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we didn't do this four percent.
Like what we currently have, you know, like. Like our.
My opinion, I mean, opinion, I'm gonna be a cushy person for this. No matter what the employees that aren't at that fifty percent, we have to get those to fifty percent. Look, through your four employees. Because I don't wanna go through something tomorrow, or today, or whatever, we decide to say we met with what we did last year, but you still keep things. Four employees below that fifty percent, I think that's not.
Right, you take a look at that?
That's definitely not correct, you know? But that's, I'm just saying that as an opinion, that was something that was to come off of those individuals definitely.
So Candy, you're working on the current system?
Yes. I, yeah, way too many interventions.
Yeah.
And like, as in close.
So, so my, my thought, you know, if, if an additional meeting would be necessary for just this one topic. Would be the twenty-ninth. No, little shake in his head.
All depends on Candy, can you get the stuff together? That look for you?
Or, or we could do it, you know, a week from today.
Yeah.
And do the twenty-seventh.
What do you have on the twenty-ninth, are they gonna be in?
No.
No.
No. Get it, get it done.
Yeah, we could, we could get it in the morning, like, uh.
If I have it at like eight o'clock.
I'll say goodnight.
About four thirty.
I mean, I'm awake, you probably could.
Yeah, why so late?
And if, and if you can maybe, I mean.
I'm just curious to see what the numbers would be.
Yeah, I would like to see that.
That's the biggest reason, I'm not saying one way or the other, I would like to be curious of what the numbers are, like, pull the individuals up that aren't at the fifty percent. And you probably have the individuals, so that we make sure we have that in there also, otherwise it's gonna be a whole ball, I get that. But let's see what the numbers are. You know, so we can compare. I mean, if we're.
If they don't have a streamline of it, then we can go off to something like this. You know, you gotta put it in this kind of format.
Yes, it is, yeah. Yeah, I have like this one.
I think we just pick a day and.
So twenty-ninth at eight or twenty-seventh at eight?
Twenty-seventh would work better for me, but I can make the twenty-ninth work, if you need to.
What's everybody's schedule look like next Tuesday morning?
What are budgets due?
Um.
Yes.
I'll let you know after, we have a special meeting. Probably the first meeting in July, maybe, maybe?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, uh, twenty-seventh at eight. Who wants the first meeting in July, July sixth?
On Thursday.
And July sixth.
So county department has to wait a week to figure out.
Well, it should be much.
Well, does that sound right, though, I mean, just. I mean, just, just pulling off what Kevin said.
Yeah, but I have your budget, they've already, and once we decide on wages, all you have to do is pull that information off the spreadsheet and put it on the.
Right, because of.
Oh, I'm not complaining, I'm just clarifying.
I think you're saying the numbers are there, you just got to put it into them.
Yeah.
So did we have a motion for ADM on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, further discussion. All right, ADM Tuesday in July or June 27th? ADM June 27th.
And with, well, with your budget being, the bigger budgets, like, if you need more time, that's.
Well, no, I, I can get it done, I'm just, I'm just clarifying, that's all.
You know?
I don't think it'll be a problem, I think we can find time.
Probably the, the three big ones are sitting in the room.
Yeah.
They're ready.
Yeah.
And that'd be you, Mr. Wang, Sherif, Kevin.
I'd start it online for Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we all have. It's just this portion of it that we need to nail down and get those final numbers from Candy and Brian that they're working on and, and we can button that up and so, all right. All in favor of table ending until the 27th, we have a special meeting, ADM, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do you think you'll have that done this week, Candy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, unless anybody has anything else to discuss on 2024 budgets, I think that was, that's all that I have in my radar.
Blue Cross numbers, I checked on that, I won't get that till. Second to, yeah, that'll probably be the August first. They're, they're not quick to, to get numbers.
So we'll keep, try to keep the 27th short for everybody. We'll have those numbers by the end of the week, so we'll have the weekend to review and then come in and make the decision, okay? And the CCA standing committee requests. These were the requests that we had. They need this by July 16th, I believe it is.
19th.
19th?
Yeah. Anybody set time to look at it?
Anybody want to?
Or we'll just keep it on there and.
Was it the audit committee and?
Audit committee, nominating committee, or the resolution.
And one, you'd have to make the commitment to actually go to the convention in, in October to be on that committee, so if your thoughts are not going to be at, able to attend the convention in October.
Let's look to them. We'll have to virtual prior to, and then a break meeting during.
So, okay. So we'll continue to, we'll put that maybe on the 6th of July for a final, final, final. Okay. Moving on. Approved liquor license, we have the liquor license for the establishments in the county outside the city limits is basically how that is. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So move, second.
Moving second, that we approve the liquor license for the establishments outside Grill Bay Golf Course, Ty's Lodge, Buckhorn Saloon, Pro's Lakeside, At The Prove, Devil's Lake Speedway, At The Bait Shop, Look's Bar, Military Service Club, The Camp Crafton, Patriot Fuels, which better known as Binings, and Thirsties for when they do their specialty events. I'm thinking Thirsties?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably like.
I was going to forget that. No, no, they do it, no, right?
Yeah.
They do it.
There. Motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Special permit.
Move approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special permit, which is.
Mike Brown.
Oh, yeah.
Pop's Bar for.
Steak and.
Out at the Peterson Arena. For Saturday.
For this coming Saturday?
Correct.
Yeah, for the steak fry. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah. If you haven't gotten your ticket for the Steak Fry fundraiser event, see a for each member. So, achievement day is already. Oh, yeah, it is already the end of June. Well, okay. So it had, we didn't approve that yet, correct? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve the site authorizations, we have three of them to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the site authorizations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Homestead credit abatement.
Move to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Visitors delegations, Sherif Wang.
The only thing I had to report is I gave you a sheet from Task Force. I asked them to put some numbers together. Over the weekend, we ran an operation called Blue Storm, which was an interdiction. Main focus was to try to eliminate drug traffic coming in and out of our area. Some of the stats that come with this, well, I should say that we had 11 different entities that participated. We had the Highway Patrol Committee and help us, DIA, Benson County, Ramsey County, Task Force, DCI was here, Border Patrol and FBI, and Customs were here. In total, for two nights, or yeah, basically two nights of work, they did 90 traffic stops, wound up with five DUIs, 15 criminal warrant arrests. Some were actually pretty large arrests, which were really good. We got eight drug charges out of there, out of this, and the K-9 was deployed eight times. And unfortunately, we had two pursuits that happened and we were able to run them off too, so. We used UAV team, which they were pretty instrumental in helping us doing some of this, especially when people took out running. So it's a little bit of all what we were doing and working with different entities and trying to just make our county a safer place.
Thank you, awesome. Keeping your office busy.
Well, we got a new Assistant State Attorney coming, so it's good, she accepted.
Wonderful, that's great.
She admitted, I guess, so. Sheriff Ryan will keep her busy.
Anything else, Sherif?
No, that's all I've got for now.
Appreciate you guys.
New cars are in next mid-July, we should be able to go get them, everything installed with them, so.
Great, thank you. Mr. Jager, nothing? You guys been awful busy with the weather tonight?
Going to be.
Going to be, we had a search and rescue call, that's why we bailed.
Oh.
We had a successful one, so.
Successful search rescue?
Yeah.
Now, I'd imagine with the way the weather popped up, maybe?
Yeah, swimming, got too far offshore with the wind started blowing down.
Oh, well, big body of water, please be careful out there, everybody. Now, um. Anybody else?
Steak fry on Saturday at 5 o'clock. Steak fry at 5.
And the achievement days this weekend, is that correct? Yep. Steak fries at 5. Tickets are $25 for a steak and is it 10 or 15 for the burger?
10.
10, yeah. So great fundraising opportunity, great opportunity to get a great meal, so. Water tour, if anybody wants to come along to the water tour, that's open to commissioners and public and anybody else that wants to attend. Registration is at the Homestead Egg Center at 8 a.m. Wheels up at 8:30. We're going to Boogalooa Top, the dyke with motor coach. So if you see a motor coach out on the top of the dyke, don't stop us. From there, we'll be crafting and looking at all the. That are available to, to the state at Camp Crafton. Some of the, you know, obviously National Guard plays a very vital role in flood protection and spring events and other activities that they do out there in the RTI, Regional Training Institute, and other aspects of Camp Crafton. We'll spend a couple hours out there, including lunch in the mess hall. And, and then from there, we'll head east to the east end outlets. Structure is the intake at East Devil's Lake, sucking water in. And then we'll go up to the Toma Cooley where it's discharged, the Toma Cooley control structure. And then we'll stop in at Friends and Neighbors Cafe for a conversation with some of the community leaders in, in around the Toma area and wrap up the tour with a demonstration of some irrigation infrastructure and the important role that irrigation plays in the state of North Dakota at Mike Tweed's residence on Highway 15 west of Toma. So, and then back to town, coming up the Woods Rotten Road. And we'll be pointing as we're going because I'm sure we'll be running late. So don't stop us there either. We'll be, always make an emphasis to get people back in town by 5 p.m., so. If anybody wants to join, it's a $30 charge to the public. Anyone that's go to Water Education Foundation and Devil's Lake Joint Board, pick up the tab for elected officials and including county commissioners and others, state's attorneys and any legislators that want to come along. I think we have three legislators that are signed up to attend, so. ADM on Thursday. Anybody else?
Today we completed public health interviews for administration job.
Oh. It went well?
It went well. Individuals should be hopefully contracted tomorrow.
Good.
We would like to start the individual hopefully two, three weeks. So maybe piggyback with.
Ashley can stick around for a little while and learn from, hopefully, her leadership. Sure. Yeah. Nothing else?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Well, with that, I appreciate everybody putting in some extra time tonight. We need a drink.
Okay, I'll leave that. I'll go get them for us first.